We good? Oh, I thought you played the. Oh, I didn't hear it. Thank you. Good evening. Like to call a meeting to order. First order of business is pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am Daryl Cecil, chairman of the Eastland Peter Township Planning Commission. Also present in the meeting room tonight is Jerry Huskin, Sarah Ryder, Colin Cecil, Director of Planning, Alicia Hare Assistant Administrative Assistant, and Dave Sinopoli Assistant Assistant Zoning Officer. On Zoom with the Planning Commission is Randy Patterson and Jason Dagan. And I believe they're the only two Zooming. So we have five members present, three here and two on Zoom. So first order of business is approval of the minutes of the January 11th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or additions? I just, I have one, just that we could include the date of the meeting in the header.
I did, yes.
It's in the first paragraph, but it's convenient to have in the header. Any other comments or changes to the minutes? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve. We have the motion by Jerry. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Sarah. All those in favor, please say hi and raise your right hand. Unanimous for approval. Thank you. Next item, all business, none at this time. New business, we have Plan 2021-281728 Lincoln Highway East. Anybody present? If you could come up to the mic, I believe it's on. Identify yourself and thank you. That'd be fine.
We're going to be discussing some of these car wash projects. Sundance Car Wash operates as a system car wash facility. The track, the track is approximately 4.7 acres. And the car wash consists of six washbaits. Washbaits into one drive through and then five self-serve. There are nine existing vacuum dumpsters, the back aisles, and the track has six access points. There are three existing access walkways. One to go west, two on the highways. They get high road. Sundance is going to upgrade their facility. Facility somewhat integrated with the actual construction. They were looking at state of the art car washing. But they configured a lot of washbaits and actually some certain things. So the project has been funded through the board and all of this. Multiple sundancees to attract the expansion of the car. Sundance is what we do, the speed of the car. It's like 3,000 square feet to the 5,000 square feet. They tend to roughly told by building by, you know, just the building and the side, west side and back. All the 5,000 square feet. It maintains six washbaits. However, washbaits then consist of three drive-throughs, three self-serve. Can't completely be located in the center of the building. This allows to get completely doggy washing and other washbaits themselves. Other site improvements would consist of closing off all access. Sorry about that. The access points onto Lincoln Highway East will be closed. And that would require a PennDOT community access permit. We have applied for that permit and just this week we did receive essentially an approval from PennDOT. We just have to set up a business partner ID number with them, which is very miniscule. And then ultimately post a letter of credit to PennDOT. So that, that PennDOT letter was submitted to the township for record. We will also submit the approval to PennDOT HOP once it's received. Other access improvements would be eliminating the access point from the west, from the adjacent property. And we replace that small landscape strip with a vegetated screen. And then we also reduce the size of the free access connections on Tennyson Drive. And really what we're doing is we're changing the circulation pattern within the track itself. Currently, the drive-through comes from north to south. That direction. But what we're looking to do is bring all traffic into the southernmost access point. And then you have three rows of stacking, three washbaits that stack to the free self-serve bits. Stacking lanes for two of those beds would be 100 feet as required by zoning. And so we did receive a variance from the third stacking lane, about a 75-foot stacking lane versus 100. This would also allow all customers to exit the north side of the building where the current back aisles located on the south side are now located on the north side. Those back aisle locations gets it away from residential use on the southern property. There is a residential element, like there's sort of property. So we're trying to get that noise off of the net as well. Other site improvements would be proposing curbing along the frontage, the curbing excess along the may happen. We're testing drive and the frozen sidewalk. We're upgrading stormwater management by increasing the size of the bioretention area along the southern property line. We have a lot of appropriate calculations to the township engineer for stormwater. And it's had been submitted to the constipation district. We have received, we have a statement from the constipation district. We've received passing improvements for water source along with tetris soil, water design improvements from the I believe it's only four outstanding comments from the township. Please review that. One comment, pause, receiving. Water design approval, which we basically discussed. We updated easement, that's right, easement along the property by adding additional bearing distance. The yard process, the PennDOT HOP is last one, sorry. Field, we have all comments addressed. So we added six foot retention on the sidewalk. So like I said, I think we're very good shape with much of the sundance. Y'all are asking for a multitude of waivers. The township engineer has a few of those in his revenue, creating all those waivers. There are a few that have conditions. And those conditions involve gaining a PennDOT community access permit. So we're pretty good shape for I'd be happy to go each and every way of us in detail if you so choose.
The middle entrance there, is that where the access to the self-serve of a Tennyson? Yeah. Okay. So how do people get in to go to the self-serve? Okay, I can't see the. Gotcha. Yeah, I can't see the arrow in that second.
So following up on that, when you go in for a self-serve, do you, do you pull out then and go out? I'm just trying to think how, when people will be going out that exit. Yep, and come out, okay. Okay. Got it.
In addition, we want to add the same location as existing. Square. This access is sort of around the largest property.
And a question about the stacking lanes. I know you got to wait a variance for the, the length of one of those. But my question is, how, just curious, how many cars fit in the stacking lane approximately? Okay.
If they have, I kind of figured five, if you have 100 feet and figure 20 foot for the car and assuming that people don't stay way far away. Some of, depends on how close the next person gets to the one in front, I guess. But I think they can easily get five. I mean, 20 foot for a car, which is long, but yeah. Cause the parking space is what, 18 or 20 feet generally? Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, it seems much more efficient than the current. Cause I've been, been over there and yeah, you have the one back out front and you have the other eight in the back. And it seems to be much more efficient with the flow-through and generally your wash, you can't come just to vacuum, but generally your washer's car and once you're done washing, then you'll, some hole in there to dry and, and, and vacuum after, after they've washed. But it seems to work. Yeah, if we can go through the modifications and waivers and the, the first item, preliminary plan. So this would be for a final and the recommendation is to grant that. There's any discussion? And this is from the Dave Miller letter of January 27. Second item is the name of all owners and significant features within 200 feet. And the recommendation is to not waive that, but grant a modification to survey data for 40 feet from the site and GIS for the remainder of the surrounding properties. And given the nature of the site and your comments, our engineers recommending granting that. Plan scale is the third item. And you're using 20 feet to the inch. So it's more readable than the 50 or 100, which is a plan. So a modification to allow for a different plan scale. Obviously we're not waiting, you have to have some scale, but modifying it to a 20 feet. And then all existing streets at the perimeter are proposed to be in accordance with township specs. The primary one being Lincoln Highway. And I think you referenced that, that they're recommending granting a waiver of the required right-of-way subject to PennDOT approval for that. So item five is the cartway edge at street and the radii or the intersection of, I guess, Lincoln Highway and Tennyson. And there was a modification to that for 20 feet as opposed to 30.
That's correct.
Then the sixth was sidewalks. I believe you're recommending through some discussion, I guess, six feet width on Tennyson. Where it had been five and now it's six.
Yes. So the section that you're referencing, 505F requires sidewalks to be within the public right-of-way, but be located one foot off of the right-of-way. The right-of-way along Lincoln Highway is immediately adjacent to the curb and the edge of pavement. There's no possible way we can fit the sidewalk within right-of-way and one foot off of the right-of-way. So we are providing it with this grass strip, but are providing a access easement to encompass that sidewalk along the frontage of Lincoln Highway. Along Tennyson Drive, the right-of-way of Tennyson Drive is 30 feet wide from the center line. And this dark line represents the right-of-way. And you can see the edge of pavement is probably about 17 feet from the right-of-way. So for us to stick the sidewalk, one foot off of the right-of-way, that sidewalk's going to be extremely far into the site. Well horizontally, that's okay. But vertically, the site slopes up fairly steeply. That if we would go and move that sidewalk up to one foot from the right-of-way, two things would happen. We'd have to excavate the site, be able to bring it down to provide a 2% cross slope in between the sidewalk connections on each access drive. And that access drive would have to come up at a steep slope, flatten out the 2% and come up again, which would be very awkward. So we're proposing to provide a six-foot sidewalk along Tennyson, but have it immediately against the curbing.
And then that's five foot on Lincoln Highway?
I believe it's five foot on Lincoln Highways.
Are you familiar with the Bridgeport Crossroads Transportation and Land Use Study? That's recently been undertaken by the township. Was that a consideration of, there were some recommendations and it's still a study. It's not requirements, to be clear. But the recommendation in there was for six-foot sidewalks. So I'm just curious why so many, you know, is a foot more on Lincoln Highway possible?
So Daryl, I'm sorry. So that actually does meet the study in this section, five to six is acceptable.
Okay.
So.
And I, and I'm kind of in favor of what you're doing on Tennyson. Part of the, another part of that study was for some calming on Tennyson, which tends to be for some a bypass or a pass-through. So being a little narrower and keeping that there, I think may be helpful to help alleviate some of the traffic concerns that do occur on Tennyson. I think this would be a good improvement for it. Yeah, I was out, there's maybe six, eight properties to the east of the site that has sidewalk. Like down the dental and orthodontist or another use. No others have it. There are some curves, but I think there's curves adjacent to your property to the east of dental client. But the sidewalks on Tennyson, the plan that we had, it appears that the sidewalk doesn't go all the way to the property line on Tennyson.
That's correct. And the reason for that is the existing drainage way from the site. All the water essentially from the site drains out that grass strip in between the southern property line and the southern access drive. So for us to go and extend the sidewalk to that property line, you would have the existing drainage and then our updated drainage for the bioretention area draining immediately across the sidewalk itself. What we did is, is part of a discussion with township staff was, is part of bumping that sidewalk with up to a six-foot width. We also like the idea of maintaining it immediately against Tennyson instead of pushing it in so that individuals can come down the sidewalk and then ultimately step into the cartway to continue on. The municipal boundary line is our southern property line between the city and, and the township.
The seventh is the gutter spread. Can you explain that a little?
Sure. So, so the ordinance requires when drainage is within a cartway, that the flow of the water along the gutter, which would be either along the edge of pavement, grass or curbing. And this proposed curbing, this instance doesn't extend out beyond, I believe, seven feet from the edge of the gutter. This is an existing condition. We're not proposing to go in and upgrade Tennyson to the center line of the road. So the gutter spread is more of an existing condition where the flows will continue down as we're currently doing now. Um, I, I will point out though, that we are slightly reducing the amount of impervious coverage from existing conditions. And we are increasing the amount of stormwater storage in our bioretention area. But we're unable to go and beat that gutter spread calc because we're unable to go in and install inlets within Tennyson because there's no inlets down Tennyson around the bend. And I can't tell you how far that is, but it's extremely far. So we have no place to tie our storm system into.
And then last was on the course, calculations and the township engineers recommending granting approval of those modifications for the requirements on the last item is recorded all in the plans. So. And you had mentioned, yeah, there were four subdivision land development comments and.
The one comment that I forgot to discuss was the, the cost estimate. So the township engineer has accepted the cost opinion for the township. However, we are waiting to hear back from the sewer authorities engineer as it relates to the letter of credit amount for the sanitary sewer. We hope to get that letter here sooner than later. And ultimately, when that is approved, we will add that to the township's number for one letter of credit for the project versus two.
Then we also had a review from the county.
That's correct.
From November 1st. And there were three comments and that review letter by county planning staff. Sheet three shows existing car wash signage and church sign. These existing improvements should be removed to avoid confusion. The second item is just the notations on the plan. Changes that they're looking for, which, do you have any issue with complying with those three items?
We don't. The plan does, the, our plan has actually been revised to take into account relocating those signs, updating the county's certificate. And then we will add, matter of fact, this plan shows it, the LCPC number on the plan itself.
The existing signs to be removed, which is kind of in the center of the right-of-way with Lincoln Highway and you're putting a new one closer to Tennyson.
That's correct.
Has that, is that, I'm guessing the original sign probably was before our sign ordinance specific. Has that been reviewed? Is that in?
Yeah, we did request some variances for the signage. Some of them were denied. So the site, the site design or the sign design was updated. Whenever it's time to submit for appropriate permits, the applicant will do so. But the relocation of the sign, you are correct, it was in the center. It's now actually being located where that, if you can see that, that small rectangle.
We had, in other words, some issues on Route 30 where there are some large signs out on Route 30 Strip. And if you remove the sign or put a new one up, it has to comply with the current ordinance. A lot of those are far in excess of the sign sizes, height with, you know, square footage. So I was just wanting to make sure that, you know, that our zoning folks are taking care of the signage. So, you know, and they'll probably take a peek at it with the variances that you receive. Signage is necessary, but it's also can be guarding, I guess, is a, yeah. So we want a tasteful signage, but in regards to that. Any comments from planning commission questions? Jason or Randy?
None from me.
I'm good.
Just a, a general question with, and I'm not a car wash fully, with your new one, are, is there any recycling of the water? Through, I don't know if your current system does that, but will the new system do recycle the water?
There is, these gentlemen can explain the system much better than I, but in a nutshell, there's going to be a reclamation system, filtering system. And they're, they're going to be installing multiple tanks along the frontage of the property to collect that and recycle it. So it's anticipated that the water usage will actually be reduced with this new facility.
Cause you're totally removing the existing structure and building a
That's correct, yes.
You'll be leveling and then.
I answered that question correctly.
You couldn't see, there was a lot of head nodding back there and the positives. If no other comments or questions, we'll look for a motion. Randy's our motion guy.
I saw Sarah look up at the screen. I will make a motion if, if no one else wants to do that. I would move that we recommend to the board of supervisors, the approval of land development plan number 2021-28 for 1728 Lincoln Highway East. And with that recommendation, a recommendation for waivers on the need for preliminary plan for a 40-foot review of, instead of 200-foot review for existing developments, things like that. Waiver be granted for the scale of the plan to 20 inches, 20 feet per inch. But a waiver requirement, a waiver be granted of the requirement to reconstruct Lincoln Highway East and Tennyson Drive to the center line with the condition that all PennDOT approvals are secured. That a waiver for the 20-foot radius as opposed to a 30-foot required radius for Lincoln Highway East and Tennyson be approved, again with the condition that all PennDOT approvals are secured. That the sidewalks, a waiver be granted for the sidewalk along Tennyson Drive to be further than one foot from the right-of-way. That a waiver be granted. That a waiver be granted to exceed one half of the 13-foot wide travel lane along Tennyson Drive for the gutter spreads and a waiver be granted for the required maximum loading ratios in car-sto non-car-st areas. Along with those other comments on subdivision land development and the David Miller letter dated January 27th, 2021, and the three comments from the Lex County Planning Commission dated November 1st, 2021.
With that, we have a motion, do I have a second? And a second from Jerry, any discussion? Not.
The only thing I, I might have missed this, but for, on the David Miller letter, item six, we're recommending that that be granted with the condition that a pedestrian access easement be provided.
Yes, they are, they are doing that.
Okay.
Because of the
Yep, I just didn't hear that in the motion, so I just wanted to make sure it was in there. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't mention that because in their letter, they mentioned they were doing that, so that's why.
Great, thanks.
Any other discussion? What? All those in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
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 So I'm in favor, no opposed, so thank you very much. I'd also like to thank you Todd and the owners. The initial letter had numerous other comments for zoning and stormwater. And thank you for cleaning that up before you came before us, much appreciated. There were, well, as you know, there were numerous comments there and we appreciate that you addressed those before coming here. So thank you very much. Next item of business are briefing items. Three items under the briefing and I believe Colin's going to take care of those.
Yes, so the first one is 264 Maple Avenue. The owner is proposing a manufacturing building as well as relocating the existing dwelling on the property to the rear. And he's adding a barn and some other, other accessory dwellings. Structures, I'm sorry.
That's mostly currently a vacant lot because there's a residence on a portion of that property.
Correct, yes.
So they'll be removing that residence.
Correct.
That's where this new manufacturing building is going, so.
Yes. The second is from Treehouse Foods. They are adding a small addition in the rear of the property in order to comply with Lancaster's city sewer requirements. So that, if you've seen that shortly.
They're doing work now, it's not related.
It's somewhat, they're cleaning out lines that were backed up and impacted by some of the processing that they were doing. So yes, they are cleaning some up and doing some stuff right now that will tie into this eventually, so. And the last briefing item is 2109A Old Philly Pike where it's currently an, an existing dwelling and they are gonna construct a semi, a single family, the semi-detached building.
Yeah, you know what, this is directly across from the faith church. If you come across the road from P and dot and please forget the name of the road. Oakview, they come to Oakview down to Old Philly Pike, this is Old Philly. Straight across to the driveway into these residences. So it's in to the right.
Colin, I have a question, Colin, on the, the Treehouse Foods. So it, it's such a small addition and I didn't go back and read the ordinance, so that's why I'm asking the question. Are there any types of plans like this that staff has the authority to approve without bringing to the planning commission? Or something like this, that this, it's this small?
We do not, so whether it requires land development or a waiver of land development, it would still require a recommendation from the planning commission and ultimately a board supervisor approval.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think, is that 1,000 square feet is the threshold?
I don't believe we, we have any, I think any addition.
Is this one that staff will review and give us comments as opposed to our township engineer?
No, so this will be reviewed by DMA.
Okay. Any other business?
None.
Unlisted. Announcements?
None.
Forecast meeting was this past Saturday, thank you to those that were able to make it. I believe last time in our packet, which I found yesterday, was the Ethics Act Forum.
Yes.
I think you provided to us to complete and return. So if you haven't done that, do that and send it in. I'm still not clear if we really have to do them because we're purely advisory. But they keep asking us for them, so every year. So it's a brief forum, but.
I'm used to filling this out. I'm used to filling this out.
Oh yeah, yeah, I am too. So if you can find that in your packet from last month, and if not, I'm sure Alicia would be happy to give you another one. If nothing further, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Jerry, do I have a second? All those in favor, aye and right hand. Thank you. And see you next month, March 8th, thank you.